Can we have a roll call, please?
Bob and Serpy.
Here.
Barbara Craig.
Here.
Russ Winn.
Here.
Chairman Kurlender.
Here.
Richard Donnelly.
Here.
Roger Brunswick.
Here.
Jim Morster.
Here.
Would you lead us in the invocation, please?
Father, we thank you, Lord, for a day that you've given us this day, and we ask your blessings upon it be upon us in this meeting as we look at the items before us or agenda and continue to guide us and direct us as a city in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any public comment at this time?
You're the only one here.
Hearing none. I think we could have a relatively short meeting here, but the purpose is, we went to city council with the front end of our work, our framework discussion, which was a two-step process to change how we deal with planned developments. They asked us if we would look at Astero and Naples and report back. I also got the distinct impression that there wasn't a lot of support for a two-step process. John Domer, myself, and in the case of Astero, the city manager, met with Mary Gibbs. John and I also went to Naples. The plan was to include a group of you to go and meet with them, but our outside council told us we couldn't do that without noticing it, and that would have put the meeting back, and we would have lost our ability to go to the January council meeting to present our views. So if I may, I'll be very brief on what we found in Naples, and then a little bit more, and maybe ask John to fill in. The Naples process is totally different than either Benita Springs or Astero in that it has no development order. It takes the development order process and puts it at the application stage. Think about that. So they have full engineering drawings, landscape plans, the whole thing, before they file their application in Naples. Nevertheless, when you go through the process and you work your way through, now you've already spent a fortune not knowing whether you'll even get a preliminary approval. So they have informational meetings, they have regular meetings, and they have a design review board at the end. But the big difference was the fact that they take the back end of the process, move it to the front, and they get a very clear picture of what's being done. They do allow amendments for larger projects as you go down the road and so on. So that was basically Naples. At Astero, they have informational meetings at the beginning. They don't have neighborhood meetings, but you have an informal meeting, which is noticed, but it's an informal meeting with the zoning board. You get a feel for what the zoning board wants. Oh, and at that zoning board, they have a pattern book, and we can talk about what the pattern book is in a while. But then they go back and they work with staff some more, they come back for a formal meeting, and then they go to council for an informal meeting, then a formal meeting, and then to their design review board. So they have a one-step process, but it's really a multi-step process. It could be argued that it's a three- or a four-step process.
Sounds like it.
Right? But our takeaway from these meetings was that perhaps we could present something a little bit more appealing to our city council and simplify what our recommendation is by combining our second step into the first step and have a one-step process with no design review board but a pattern book. We have a committee in place led by Mr. Donnelly that's looking at, you know, what the details would be, fleshing out what the details would be. But in the meantime, if we can go back in January with something, a bit of a modification from what we went, perhaps we can garner four votes to go forward. But they were very helpful. The meetings were good. John, why don't you fill in the blanks here? I've kind of given you a 10,000-foot level overview of the meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning, John.
That was actually a very good overview, and I think that, really, to almost put in perspective, the whole reason we're having this discussion was because there was a great deal of concern about the level of information that you were receiving as part of your application packets, particularly as it related to planned developments. Other applications could fall under that, but what you mainly see are rezonings to planned developments, and so that's where the bulk of our discussions have taken place. The chairman did a very good job of outlining the Naples process, what they tend to do, tend to do, they always do this. They are thinking about some changes, but the current process is a preliminary site plan, in which case you submit the full details of your thought. That goes, if there are no deviations from the code, it simply goes to their planning board or their design review board. If there are deviations, it comes from the design review board and then goes to the city council. After that approval, they are then able to file whatever application it is that they want to file, whether it's a zoning, a conditional use, because they do conditional uses instead of special exceptions, same thing, different name, whatever variant is, whatever they're asking for, that can be done then. And then, once that's finished, they follow that up with a final site plan, which generally incorporates whatever changes came out of that zoning process into the plan that was already approved. From there, they start their construction, file the building permits. The Village of Astero's process, just if you look at the flow charts, and this was reiterated by some of their staff members, is very similar to ours. And it's similar because it came from the exact same document that ours came from. It came from Lee County. They had a little bit of a different start in the fact that, prior to their incorporation, the county had provided them a chapter in their land development code and also specific sections in their comp plan that outlined a modified process for the Village of Astero. So when they came into a corporation, a lot of that framework was already there. The difference between what we see and what they see generally comes down to the submittal requirements and partially with the pattern book, but there's also some other changes that they have in terms of what they expect to be submitted as part of their zoning applications. The pattern book, according to them, has become more than is required, not that they have a problem with that, but they really want to see how the building is going to appear architecturally from all four sides. They want to see the landscaping, they want to see pedestrian, non-motorized access, also vehicular access, and then they want to see what, from the property line in, what is the site going to look like with the landscaping and the architectural design. Excuse me. So they get a pretty good feel for what the intent is at the zoning level, and then when they start getting into their development order, they just fine-tune that general design. So as we're coming through these meetings, I think that both the chairman and I had the same thought to address the main concern, and that is, what do we do with the level of detail that we are reviewing as part of these zoning applications? Maybe we don't need a two-step process, which was born of the thought to provide additional flexibility to developers so they don't have all the answers. Maybe we start looking at something that's maybe just more detailed from the start, and where do we find our balance? You know, the City of Naples has found their balance, the Village of Astero's found theirs, even though both of them are still shifting. The Village is going through rewriting their land development code, the City of Naples is going through to modify their process, so nothing ever stays static. But they've found something, or at least a general idea, that works for them. So what is the general idea that works for us? And I know that the pieces of both the City of Naples and the Village of Astero, plus some things that we've already developed internally, that kind of go to those thoughts, and that's kind of where we're hoping to have a little bit of a discussion with this board today. The idea of having architectural elevations, the idea of those architectural elevations, including landscaping and including access, it seems to be a no-brainer. It seems to be something that everybody has discussed, that they want to see in part of the submittal package. There's also the idea of moving some of the information that we normally see in the development order phase up a little bit, and what form that takes, what details we include, all options are on the table at this point. So that's my long-winded discussion of those meetings.
I have a question, John.
Yes, sir.
Look at the Astero project that's on 41 at Astero Boulevard on the west side. I'm going to say that's a 100-acre project, right?
Just under, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Actually, that's a very good guess.
Okay. Yeah. They don't know for sure what's going in totally in the back end of that project as far as a building design, all the architecture we do, because I'm certain, I don't know this for a fact, but I'm certain it's not all sold out.
They have, and we specifically discussed that project, and there are some things that they don't know, because you're right, the tenants are not known, but the general architectural design, the general size, scale of those buildings is known. And now, when they come back in, if there's modifications to that, they've got to get a modified approval.
Okay, so it's a theme that they're creating, not final details?
Correct. But, well, let me refine that. It's not just a theme. It is more specific than a theme, but it's not building plans. So you're not looking at engineered plans, but it's, the level of detail that they require requires a little more thought than just a concept.
It seems like Astero, it seems like they have a particular architect pattern on the outside. It seems like anybody goes in there to build, there's a certain style, a certain look, I don't know what you call that, but you can see that. I hear pros and cons on the street on that, you know, comments, pros and cons. I know the Hess, I mean, the Hearst building, there was some conflict on that, but is that part of that pattern?
So it's interesting you should mention that, because in our discussions, right now, they seem to allow two styles, what they call Mediterranean, which is the predominant style, but they also allow Old Florida. So they originally created this design review board, and then they had to discharge a majority of the members of that design review board because of conflicts of interest. So someone would be sitting up here as the design review board, hearing a matter, the next matter would be called, they would go down and testify, and then come back for the third kick. Well, you know, the appearance of that is pretty bad. So they have a new design review board, and now this new design review board has decided that it's going to make new policy. They don't want to have strictly Mediterranean and Old Florida. They said, let's open it up. Well, how a board like us or a design review board, it was my understanding that we elect officials who make the policy, and we don't make policy, we enforce the policy or grant modifications or something, but we don't make the policy. So they're struggling with this, it seemed to me, I don't want to put words in their mouth, there are a lot of pluses, they feel, but there's some minuses, too. But that's a question that's currently on the table. What they are doing right now is, they have hired an outside firm along with an engineering firm, and over two years, they originally tried to get it into one, but it's going to leak into the second year, they're totally redoing their code, their land development code. They're not taking a chapter. The cost is enormous, but they're doing it. They bit the bullet, and they're going ahead and revising their land development code. So we'll see what comes out of it. I have a copy of the latest presentation that the firm that they hired presented to their council, and it's pretty detailed. I mean, they're going to have a total revision, but they're basically in the same position we are. You know, they took Lee County's land development code, started pasting and cutting and so on, but, you know, they're a lot younger than we are as a municipality, and so they don't have quite the hodgepodge that we have. But, so there, the answer to your question is, you know, my own view is, I think it looks pretty good there, but, you know.
I spoke at some length with Don Eslick about the history behind how they came to where they are, and I think that's always important to understand, is where they were and where we were. And he talked a lot about how the whole concept of what they wanted Astero to be was developed around the Coconut Point Mall, that that particular, that particular proposal, which was so huge, it was like 500 acres or so, was so huge that it brought the community, this is before they're incorporated, so they were doing this under Lee County, it brought them together, it was actually the beginning of ECL, the beginning of bringing some community leaders to act, really as a spokesperson for the community with the county at the point. And it was at that point that they developed their sort of sense of what do we want to look at in the future. We grew a very different way, and if you look at our land development code, you can, I mean, there are standards of what we want to do, but there are all kinds of different designs, you can be pretty much anything, and I don't think we had the same sense when we started, maybe because we didn't have that kind of a big project to bring everybody together to think about, to say, this is what we want Benita Springs to look like. So we have much less of an overarching design goal that we're trying to create, and I think as that has developed, that has created a different set of frustrations, just as trying to go with just two styles has created frustrations in Astero that they have to deal with. And I think the most important thing that you said was that, when you create a new process, it's always a moving thing that is going to change, and that's why I said when I testified, this isn't going to be the final thing, it's going to, we're going to have to let it grow and develop as we see where the problems are. So I think to try to come up with a perfect process is going to mean that you're not going to come up with anything, you know? The perfect is the enemy of the good, and we really do have to think about that. I just feel that the way it is now, it really needs some tweaking to make it work, and I would rather have small steps in a good direction than no steps. So rather than trying to create the perfect product, maybe what we could think about is, what are the things that we most want to have done, that we could do within what we're doing now without the big, huge change and hiring the big company, which I don't think there's the stomach for, at least that I'm hearing when I go to council? So I think what we started with is a good approach. We said, too much of the stuff is in Chapter Three. We need to get a little bit more of that stuff into Chapter Four when we're doing the review, or else our review is meaningless. So what I'd like to see us do is, if the two-step process is problematic, and I've always had sort of pluses and minuses about that, but let's try to take what was good out of the two-step process, put it into a one-step process, and move in a good direction. And I don't know whether we have to go the whole way of the pattern book, but I think we need to move in a direction of getting more visible and background data for us to make a decision. And if we could set that as a goal, I think we can meet it, if we're going to try to totally redesign it and become something else, that's going to be very hard.
And another thing, I think that Benita's been around, what, 100 years plus?
Yes, sir.
And so we have old Benita. I live in a 1910 home, and so we got that style, and as the city grew and the area grew, you know, it just evolved. Astero had a chance to have that Coconut Point Mall, and then from there was able to kind of piggyback off of that to make, hey, let's make all the buildings look that way. We have kind of a hodgepodge here just because of the history.
And that's important thing to keep in mind.
And, you know, to keep in mind, you know, downtown where I'm at, you do have a lot of historical buildings, looks are a lot different than maybe on the outskirts of the city.
And I think that what, to kind of, both of those comments, that if we were to approach this from a one-step process and maybe make some modifications to what you want to see with that, if we decide to go back and look at the option of somebody wants to do a two-step process for some reason, for certain developments, we can always do that, because I think that there are some good points that, why that was discussed in the first place. So the idea of two steps probably shouldn't be off the table. I don't know if it should be your top priority. I think we start looking at, what do these buildings look like? And I'm not even sure, based on what was starting to, at least, make sense to me, if it's bringing some Chapter Three forward or really just starting to increase the standards that we enforce. People do it different ways. The City of Naples has a pretty strict architectural code that people follow, and the Village of Astero does it through architectural code, but they also have the details presented to them through the pattern book. So I don't even think that, to your point, there is no perfect answer, but there are multiple ways to get to where you want to go. It really comes down to, what is a city's priority? And knowing that whatever we establish reflects the priority of this council and this group, 15 years from now, a new council and a new group may decide that they want to do something different, and that will be their ability. But right now, what does this group want to see? What does this council want to see? What takes us from where we are to a document or at least a submittal that you can review and feel comfortable with?
Anybody else?
I just wanted to say one more thing that Don mentioned, is that their process is based on the Boca Raton process. When they developed theirs, they went and spent a whole day over there and talked with people, and they went to some of the meetings, and they, so that they used a design to come from, but that has developed over time into something different. I just wish us to move forward and do something to make this better, and if you can't do it in a giant leap, let's take some baby steps and get in a better direction.
Anybody else? So I have, oh, go ahead, Jim.
At the risk of being thrown out.
Never.
And off this committee, the presentation we made to the council had a list with a bunch of check marks. I truly believe nobody at the council went through that list and looked at it. They saw, my God, there's all these things that are requirement. Well, all those things that are on that list are exactly what Astero and Naples are asking for. Now, you can massage a couple of them and maybe reword, soften or harden as necessary, but there's no reason we can't use that as a basis, in my opinion. Now, we have to be careful about presentation, because you'll get the same black look when you present it to the council. I see that when we say, we've said two-step, everybody tightens up. There's nothing in the two-step process that includes more. If you go to the one-step process, all the things that are required there, a portion of those are required in the two-step, and we were trying to make it easier. Obviously, that didn't fly. But I think we can massage what we have, redefine it, reword it. This is a combination of Naples slash Astero. This is Benita Springs that has picked up on all their good things, and basically, we've got it on a list is what we want already.
And I think you're right, maybe presentation is everything, a long list with checklists, maybe just one of those things that makes people go like this. Put it in a paragraph.
Exactly. We didn't sell it the way we saw it. We scared everybody with a bunch of check marks that you couldn't read, frankly.
Perhaps a picture or a plan that shows those as opposed to a list, and it might be easier to point with a pointer to a section of the plan and say, this is where we look at the landscaping, this is where we look at the architectural.
And possibly in a presentation, make a comparison between Naples, as Larry just did, on what they require, and frankly, what we had presented is probably less than what either Naples or Astero. It's slashing more. In some places, it's less, in some places, it's maybe a little bit more.
Yes.
And, you know, the gentleman who spoke that night, and I'm terrible at names, but to try to say that if we did this, you know, no developer would come here, I think that comparison is very useful, to say, well, they seem to go to Naples, they seem to go to Astero, that kind of a scare tactic over change struck me as being very counterproductive, but I think it, you know, brought some of the people in the council to concern. So I think we should, I think you're very right, we should compare what we're doing to our surrounding neighbors and say, we're not asking for anything more. In fact, our problem has been, we've been asking for so much less, we could not make the kinds of decisions.
If I may add, we may be retooling it to kind of match what Astero is paying big bucks for to get changed and what they're going to do. And we have the opportunity to do that internally. Now, I think this group knows what we want, and it's nothing more than what Naples or Astero would require.
So the issue is, what do we do when we go back to city council? We report what we observed in those two jurisdictions, but we have to have a recommendation. And while I would observe that a great leader once said that all lasting change is incremental, comes in small sets, it seems to me we have one bite of the apple here, that the thought of us going back to them every six months or whatever is not going to be very productive. So I think we have a pretty good idea of what we want, and if we put that together in a single-step process, they could tell us yes or no. But...
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Why don't we set up a meeting? We've got a committee already, okay? Let's set up the committee, get the meeting put in order, fine-tune everything, that she was so kind to say, what Jimmy said. And John said, we have all our points, all we got to do is fine-tune them.
We have to package it.
Consolidate it, you know, and then present that package to them. So let's set up a date where, if it takes us all day, it'll take us all day, so what? Where we can sit down and go through this, and then just take this out, put that in, fine-tune it, put a nice package together, put a bow on it, and then present it to them. But I've got to tell you, after the last meeting, they're not too open-minded. You know, that's the impression I got. I mean, and that's, that hurts.
Well, I really think that since what they want to do is make sure that we don't fence ourselves out of the people that want to build, they want them to consider our town as well as Naples and Astero, what we have to do in presenting this is to show what Astero and Naples are asking for and say, we're going to position ourselves kind of in the middle, and we're not doing anything extreme here, and that that might be the better packaging of selling it.
But in the same token, you know, we don't want to be Astero, and we don't want to be Naples, we're Benita, okay? And that's what we got to stick to. We want to be Benita. We don't want to be Astero, and we don't want to be Naples.
So if we want to be on the calendar in January... So if we want to be on the calendar in January for the city council, which I think we should do, we need to basically have some agreement here today as to what we should be presenting. And it seems to me that we could flesh that out further with the, with the Donnelly group as we go down, down the road. But if, if we come in with not that chart, I think the, the chart is a bad idea.
Well, it's a good idea for us because it helped us to see what was in it. But there's a difference between developing the plan and selling the plan. And I think we have to think about how, how we present this that makes it quickly and easily understandable.
So we, we, we need to go in with a unanimous, or as unanimous as we could be, point of view with some specifics, but not all fleshed out. For example, a pattern book. There seemed to be a lot of receptivity on that, on the city council to have a pattern book. Now, we could make the pattern book a little bit more simple than they do in Astero and all that, but that would come later. But we, we should go in and say, look, what we told you last time holds true, but we're going to put it all in one step. And we'll have a pattern book. And we'll look some, something like Astero, but not, we, we have no design review board. We don't have multiple meetings with the zoning board and with the city council. There are a lot of distinctions how we would do it. You were going to say something, Richard?
Yeah, I, I think that, I think maybe we're thinking too small here. I mean, I think the comments that I hear, the things that Naples does, the things that Astero do, they all come back to the concept of design review. And we're talking about design review, but only in, in a small section of what gets built in our city. And, and that is the planned unit development. And if, look around you at some of the mistakes in this town. You know, look at some of those mistakes we made because we had no controls. You know, I think of, one of my favorites is the Wildwood subdivision, which we were kind of powerless to fix. And I think all of us have a building in mind that was a mistake that could have been better. Those buildings would not particularly have benefited from a pattern book as such. I mean, I think the pattern book that Astero uses has created a city of gated communities and apartments and housing. Pattern books really relate to specific architectural styles. And, and architectural style that might be good next to, in this neighborhood might not be the same architectural style that's good for the next neighborhood. So a pattern book wouldn't, unless you had a pattern book for every architectural style, you're sort of stuck. I think the, you know, the common theme keeps coming up, which is design review. And shouldn't there, maybe we should think about suggesting research into the feasibility of creating a design review committee. That would reach out beyond the planned unit development. It would reach out and influence various buildings in the city. It seems to me like that's almost where we want to go, but we haven't really set it yet. And I don't know what the other, that's a different wrinkle and maybe you're going to throw me out and take my chairmanship away from me. Which would be a shame.
Never. John?
What we saw in both of those communities is that they do look at site plans. And it's not, and like I said in the beginning, we have focused our time on planned developments because that's the bulk of what you see. But I, I agree with you that you don't want to limit yourself to that because there's a lot of property and there are a lot of developments that take place because the use they want is permitted within their existing zoning district. So if this board wants to consider the idea of approving site plans, I don't think that that would put you out of bounds with surrounding jurisdictions. And even if it did, if it's something that you're looking for because of inconsistency in design and appearance, I think that goes towards the, the council's number, well, was the number one goal. Now it's, it's dropped down. It's the aesthetics and appearance and development of this, of this city. So if you look at the city of Naples, like we said, outlining the process, they do a preliminary site plan, which basically shows everything that goes onto a site. And then after their zoning work is done, they come in with a final site plan. The village of Astero approves development orders. Now, my comment to them was, do you present the engineered plans that your city engineer looks at? And they said, no. There, there's a submittal, there's a, a specific submittal requirement that they have for that site plan after the development order is done, that's presented to their council and their council ultimately makes the decision on that. So the surrounding areas do look at site plans. And it's not just for planned developments. I don't necessarily look at that as a hindrance towards development. The trick is how you implement those things. What is going to be required to be reviewed by council? I think that this board and the council have been, even though there's been a wide array of opinions, everyone has generally been of the same feeling that you want develop, quality development to come in. I haven't heard anyone say that you don't want development. I haven't heard anybody say that you want the whole city to build out next year. But everybody's looked at controlled development that is quality development, that's something that you can point to and say, that is a good, that, that was a good job. We, we, we not only did our job, but the developer did their job and it turned into a quality project. And, and I think that maybe looking at part of that site plan or whether you look at doing development order approval at the council level, that might be something you want to consider. Now, the, like I said, the devil's in the details, but the idea of that is consistent with the surrounding jurisdictions.
I go back to the, to the workshop. And we took our direction from that workshop. And at the workshop, there was absolutely, Richard, no appetite for a design review board. And I can tell you that since that time, I think that it's become clear that there is no appetite for that. So that's the, the first point. Let's recommend something that we think we can get four votes for. You know, in the best of all possible worlds, and maybe it would be a good thing, but I can, from my observations talking with John and other members of the staff, there's no appetite for that. Second, the pattern book, we allow a multiple array of designs. And so when they present their book, they're not doing anything other than presenting what we already have approved. And we, we, we have much more latitude in our designs. Now, maybe we want to recommend narrowing, maybe we want to broaden it more or something, but I think that's for a later date when, when, when we get into that. But I thought that the pattern book might be a good middle ground. There seemed to be some enthusiasm for that. I'm trying to get us, we could get something done with them. And my concern is that we we, we, we get four votes out of this thing.
And a good process.
Mr. Chairman, I think we can take, I'm going to say thirty items that are on this checklist. I haven't counted. Some of them are duplicated. We could combine that in three or four groups. A pattern book, the site, which might include, of course, includes site plan. You could put your traffic data, you could put your stormwater things in there. You could put your utilities in. And maybe some uses. We combine it into three or four items.
Right.
Which are easy to explain. If they, a councilman would ask you, what's in there? You can say, well, it's the standard engineering things you have to show. The standard architectural things or the standard legal things that, that you need to show as far as the development. And that would take a lot of confusion and maybe get the attention of the council people that, oh, this, this isn't thirty items, it's three items. Just a suggestion.
Subpoints underneath those three items.
No, forget the subpoints.
I mean, I mean, a little.
Well, that could come later. Don't introduce subpoints now. Make them query
Yeah, okay.
what, what is included. What do you think about a design review committee? Well, the pattern books here. It's a matter of how we sell it to the council who is, I can guarantee you, are not on the same page broadly. And we have to get them on this simple approval process. And, and I think that would simplify it. Rich, do you think, don't you think we could combine a bunch of these things into a simple three or four line items, period?
Yeah, we, we could probably, probably do that, but I'm still concerned that we're limiting the activity to just this one situation, the planned unit development. And why can't it go beyond that?
Okay, I've got an answer for that. As I asked John earlier about the project in Astero. They're, they come in, we're just to the west. We talked about the Hundred Acre Project. All right, they're, they're building stuff up there now that they have, obviously have approval for all of the functions because they're, they're going to build a building there and have a use for it. Okay? We could do the same thi, and he mentioned that you come back later in the back part of the, of the development and you'll have to maybe come back for a review to see that you're in compliance. They, they're not getting that approval with what's initially approved. Maybe they're getting no approval. Maybe they're getting a concept approved, which is kind of our old step one process, but we're not going to call it that. We're going to call it one-step process. So so we can get the answers that we need for either a one development, one project that has a building in a use or three buildings in a use. And then we can also have that same thing that has additional land that could be developed, but they come back with that later to get the LDO. The LDO in our process.
I think when, Richard, to answer your question, most of what we hear in this community are planned development applications. Second, at the workshop, the issue that came out of there was our biggest problem that we faced, Theriax said, was the hodgepodge nature of Article Four and how what, if we cleaned it up and moved Article Three into Article Four, we could accomplish a whole lot without having to rewrite the whole code. When we go beyond planned developments, we start to get into the area of having to rewrite the whole code. And that's frankly, a $250,000. That's the opening number. That's for the consultants. Then they have their lawyers who will review what the consultant. So you're talking about major, major money here. And is it ideal that you're doing just Article Four? No. But I think it's realistic. And I think it's a big step forward, really, that could accomplish some good things for the city.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind if I just walk through a couple of quick questions? Because I think there's a lot of consensus on kind of where we're going, at least in the planned development. But I think that we probably want to expand this just a little bit, once we kind of figure out where everybody is. Does this board like the idea of having an architectural elevation submitted for all four sides of a building as part of the planned development process? Is that something you'd be okay with? Okay. And would you want to see the landscaping in front, both from a plan view, meaning straight overhead, and also from an elevation view, looking from, from the street, of how the landscaping would look with the building? Is that something that you would want included with this?
Absolutely.
Would you want to see the access, both vehicular, pedestrian and multimodal on those plans?
Yes.
Okay, so really.
And all the stormwater issues too.
We, we should probably see the areas of stormwater and, and, but maybe not all the calculations of how it's designed.
But at least the overview, so we can tell that that's been.
Correct, where it is and whether it's going to be a lake or whether it's going to be a, a swell. That, agreed. And so I, I, I think that what we can present to, to council is the idea that some of, well, basically the idea of the pattern book, and the pattern book, the phrase has gained a little bit of traction, but called architectural plans for, as far as I'm concerned, that we should modify our existing submittal requirements to at a minimum look at those things so that you have those details that you've been asking for. And I thought there was pretty clear consensus on that. Now, when we start from the same perspective on properties that don't require rezoning, or maybe properties that are going through a special exception, or maybe just filing for a development order, does this board want to discuss at this time or even bring up the idea of maybe reviewing some sort of a site plan at either the zoning board or zoning board and council level for, prior to, to construction? Is that, is that a hill too far or is that something that you want to do?
If you're in compliance, we don't have the right to do that, do we?
Well, I think that what we're looking at is, is modifying the submittal requirements and to a, a certain extent, modifying the process. And I don't want to push where this board is not comfortable. But if, there, there's a very good point that Richard Donnelly made. There are properties in the city that have, that the uses that they want to construct and use are permitted within their existing zoning district. So they will, they will simply file their development order application, which is filed with community development and review of the community development, plus whatever other department is necessary. But it's an administrative process. And then they file for their building permits. That idea has not sit very well with several members of the council and several members of this board. So to address that, if we're looking at the idea of maybe those plans receiving approval in some form or fashion, and maybe not the right time to get into the details of those plans, but just the concept of maybe a public hearing approval for that, is that something this board wishes to consider or at least present to the, the city council at this time?
Is that, is that in line with what other districts do, what other towns do?
It, it is with some of them and it's not with others. This is, this is an area.
The ones that our council seems to pay attention to.
Well, remember, we, we, we talked about how the city of Naples does a preliminary site plan before you can even file your
Yep.
zoning application. In the village of Astero, I just walked you through their, their, essentially their pattern book. And they also review a more detailed, for lack of a better word, pattern book as part of their development order approval. So site plans are approved in those jurisdictions. They are not approved at, at Lee County. I'm not sure about the city of Fort Myers or, or Cogur County. Cogur County creates its own document. And I've got to brush myself up on that process.
Go ahead.
John, what I just heard you say, every project then would need to come to the zoning board?
What those, what those other jurisdictions do, timing is different, the details are different, the process is different. But both the city of Naples and the village of Astero bring site plans to their council, or at least to their planning boards for, for approval.
Even though they comply with everything that's required in their ordinance?
Now, the village of Naples has two separate processes for those projects that do comply and for those that need deviations. So there's a more intense process if you want to deviate from the code. The village of Naples, I'm sorry, the village of Naples, the village of Astero has a site plan, for lack of a better word, that's part of their development order process. So while our development orders are approved administratively, a portion of theirs or a portion of that information in that plan is presented to, to, Chairman, correct me, I think it goes to their planning board and then to their council, but I know it ultimately goes to their council.
It strikes me that one of the things we really were supposed, supposed to have as a goal was to make the process more transparent and to allow input from and knowledge of the citizens of what is going on. And therefore, that appeals to me because what was done where, in a process that very few citizens even know happens, let alone how to get in on it, which is the administrative process, comes into the open and people have an opportunity to have input. Now, we all know that for a lot of these things, nobody wants to have input, so it just adds work too hard, load to our workload. just adds work too hard, load to our workload. But that allows for that possibility, and I am in favor of anything that makes a process more open and more transparent. So I think that that would be a very good step, actually.
And I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but if you remember, when we were looking at the two-step process, there was discussion on how some jurisdictions look at that second phase as something that's put on their council agenda on the consent.
Yes, right.
So if there's a reason to discuss the plan, they can pull it. Otherwise, they're all approved together. And we are nowhere near coming up with the final process, but it's not to say that if it's implemented, you couldn't look at that development order as being approved on the consent agenda unless, for some reason, somebody decides to pull it.
At both a zoning level and a council level?
The process would have to be determined. Right now, you are a recommending board, and they would have to give you approval authority if site plans were to be approved here.
Consent could do that.
They could simply put it on the consent agenda and have it approved together. Yes, sir.
I think maybe your point was, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just asking, does Naples, and I should know this, in Astero have a zoning board like us?
They do. They're different names, slightly different authority, but yes.
I mean, they have a place where, like what we're doing.
Yes, so they also have design review in addition to...
Like a zoning, like what we're doing, per se?
Yes, exactly the same, only they have two boards.
Okay.
So there are multiple steps that you have to jump through the hoops twice in Astero.
Okay.
Through the planning and zoning board, informal, formal. Then you have to go through the process with the city council, the village council, and then you go to the design review board.
Okay.
So it's...
Excuse me. Help me understand, the design review board is before, between the zoning board and the city council?
No.
No?
No.
They generally tend to deal with different phases of the project. And so, design review, obviously, based on its name, focuses more on aesthetics. The zoning board focuses more on use and general layout.
But the pattern book does go to the zoning board?
As part of the zoning process, that's correct.
So the issue that, so John started to ask a series of questions. To the first question, do we like this, this, and this? We said yes. To the second question, do we like a site plan? I didn't hear an answer. How, does a site plan by definition have to be the ultimate plan, or can it be?
At this point, it can be whatever we want it to be.
It can be whatever we want.
And the reason why I say that is, I know there's been discussion and there's some concern on what actually gets built, especially for those projects that don't have zoning applications. I have no idea how the city council feels about this issue, one way or another, or if their opinion on what should be submitted as far as what should be a site plan is going to be different from this board's. I don't have that information. But the question's been asked, so what would we like to do with that? If you think that your site plan should basically provide a scaled-down version of an engineering document, but enough information that you can see how a site functions and how it's going to, what the aesthetics are going to be like, we can draw up some regulations that reflect that, but that will be probably for a later date.
So you're, I think what you're suggesting is that by modifying the submittal process and the submittal requirements on sort of an across-the-board kind of basis, you could eliminate spending $500,000 rewriting the planned development code?
The cost of modifying your submittal requirements for the planned development will be significantly cheaper. If we start looking at the idea of a site plan approval for the development order, there is going to be some cost associated with that. But what that cost is, is to determine who is doing the creation of the document and how far or how much detail you want to be included. Because it's not just the process, and it's not just the submittal requirements that you have to look at, it's all of those areas of the code that impact or reference that process. So you've dealt with enough to know the tentacles reach through all of Chapter Three and all of Chapter Four, and you want to make sure that all those references are correct, and that's going to be the time-consuming part. The process itself is relatively simple.
Does anybody want to add anything? Everybody satisfied that they said what they wanted to say? So let me put this before you. Would it be, would it meet with your approval if we go to the city council and present them with the outline as John has just given it to us? Are we okay with that?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Again, it's packaging. It's really important to make this understandable and a presentation that does that, that we...
Right. Well, the question is, is anybody opposed to do it at that point?
Oh, no.
No.
You're saying, is everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Is anybody opposed?
Is anybody opposed?
No.
Okay. So I think, I think that there is a good point there that we have to package this properly to get approval from the council. And I think we'll work on that. Now, what is, what are the rules? Could we have a group meeting, or let's say, three members of this get-together before, to meet with you?
I think that what we would do is we would advertise it, just like we did the workshops we had for the subcommittees.
So...
It would have to be, yeah, it would be advertised. It would be open to the public. But we could do it, it doesn't have to be in this chamber, it could be done in different locations.
One of the things that seems to me really...
That meeting could take place in your office?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One of the things that seems to me that's critical is, we have to make a decision on this board, I keep coming back to the law, about a list of things that we're required to review and say that they meet the requirements of the law. And that's where I have the problem. We don't have enough information to make those decisions. So in packaging this, I think somehow we ought to tie it to what the law tells us as a zoning board, we are to review, and to make sure that we have the information that allows us to make this reasoned decision based on a record that is required of a quasi-judicial review. And that was my statement, that if we're not going to provide that information, we have to give up on the notion that we have any kind of quasi-judicial review. And I just, tying those two things together, there's a why we're doing this. There's a why we need this information. It goes along to providing us with the necessary information to do what we're supposed to do.
So, Richard, you have a committee. Why don't you meet with and report back to... When is the next city council meeting that we could appear? We mentioned that.
There is a meeting January 2nd, but I would recommend January 16th. It's a day meeting.
Can we, can we, as a group, get together before January 16th? Or does there have to be a big...
It would have to be advertised as a workshop, but we could work it out. How much time do you need before a workshop? Is it two weeks?
A week, two weeks? Yeah.
I think that if, even if we were to look at maybe the 3rd or 4th of January, that should give us enough time to, if there's something that needs to be put together after that meeting, that would give us enough time to put that together prior to the council meeting.
Great.
Is the 3rd, does the 3rd or 4th work for everybody?
Does that work for...
What kind of a day of the week is the 3rd?
3rd is on a Thursday, 4th is on a Friday. Top of the day.
Nine o'clock?
What date?
January 3rd is...
I have an 11 o'clock schedule for January 3rd, and that's it.
Did you get it done before that?
That would be the full meeting?
If you all need, if I need to walk away and come back.
A full meeting, so we could get together before, because everybody's got to be on the same page, and we're going to need everybody to go to the city council meeting.
Okay, but we...
It made a huge difference.
Yeah, I feel as if I missed a lot by not being there.
What's that?
City council meeting is one.
Yeah.
John?
16th.
When's the city council meeting? 16th. 16th. Yes, sir, that's their day meeting, so it's a nine o'clock hearing.
Larry, if we have a full zoning board group on the 3rd or 4th, this, Rich's committee has to meet tomorrow and the next day to start meeting.
That is a bummer.
And that has to be an advertised meeting?
Yes.
Is that a true...
It will be an advertised workshop.
How quick can that happen?
I believe...
Forty-eight hours. I think that's a forty-eight hour...
Two weeks and forty-eight hours.
Well, I was asking the one that normally advertises to make sure that...
I normally send out the emails and put it on the website and things like that.
And what we can, if you wanted to have one meeting on the 3rd and another one on the 4th, well, have maybe the subcommittee on the 3rd and the follow-up on the 4th, that would give you some time. I just don't want to push you too close to the 16th.
Right.
Because I know there's going to be some work that comes out of these.
Well, I think the subcommittee has to put together this presentation package so that we know what we want to present, which we will bring back to the full council. And we can't do one one day and have a package put together for presentation the next day. That doesn't work.
My question is, do you want to put a draft of submittal requirements as part of the presentation? Or would you like to, at least my initial thought was, part of the city council packets could be the submittal requirements for both the City of Naples and the Village of Astero, both for planned developments and also for the preliminary and final site plan for Naples. And then as part of the presentation to them, we could show a plan from Naples or a plan from the Village that implements that, so that they could see. Because I think that both, there are several people that made the point that you want it to be packaged in a way that is easy to see and understand. And I think that the list may be okay as part of a package to review, but when we're in here discussing it, it may be easier to point to a plan saying, this requirement for access is shown here, and this is how it's displayed.
And my feeling about a number of the members of the council was that we need to show that what we're asking to do does not put us as outliers in the effort to attract developers to our community, that it puts us, you know, just makes us be somewhat closer to what other people are already requiring. And that will, I think, assuage a number of the concerns of council people that I listen to or heard, at least.
It might, but what I would remind this board, and what I will also remind the council, you are the City of Benita Springs. You are ultimately responsible for plans that are approved through hearings. That doesn't mean that just because another jurisdiction doesn't do something that you shouldn't do. You have certain legal requirements that you must fall within. Falling within those requirements, the world is open to you. And what you come up with a process, regardless of what that process is, should reflect your priorities and your vision. And so I think you are correct. It's nice to do a check on surrounding jurisdictions to see how you compare, but that comparison should be done mainly for a feeling that you are competitive. The actual requirements and the actual process should be very uniquely Benita Springs, just like it should be very uniquely Naples, and should be very uniquely Astero in those jurisdictions. So you have specific concerns, and we're talking about those concerns. So whatever we do with the submittal requirements of the process, let's make sure that those concerns are addressed.
So let's get to the mechanics again. So January 3rd, the committee would meet? Is that what you're saying? And January 4th, we would meet?
Yeah, that doesn't work. We need time between that committee meeting and a package agreed upon.
Get it done.
In one day?
Yeah.
It just strikes...
What day's the committee meeting?
It's going to be one bunch.
I agree.
Right, one page.
I think what that does is allow you to hash through some ideas with a smaller group, come up with what looks like a plan for the larger group to talk about, and then be able to have the staff put together a presentation that would reflect everyone.
Exactly.
But the advantage of having a smaller group, you know, banging out with the staff beforehand, I think, is useful.
Okay, let me mention something. While we've been discussing, I think our presentation can cover four areas only. Pattern book, whatever goes into there, site, legal, and uses. That catches, we can have everything that's in that thirty checklist item under those four, one of those four categories, and it makes it so simple. And we don't have to itemize underneath that. We can just leave it in that title and let somebody ask what it's about, but we're going to know, we're going to know what's included in there.
What were they again?
It's pattern book, site, pattern book.
Looks, looks.
I'm using that term. Architectural plans is another thing you could say. Pattern book may be more inclusive.
Might be the word.
Site, legal.
Legal.
Yeah, like, are we in compliance with the comp plan? I'm pulling that out of the air.
Being compliant with the environmental regulations, that's one of the other...
And then, and then the uses.
And you know what? You might need to put, like, for instance, legal. If there's question about that, may, what happens, you did legal with a parenthesis, what that, what you meant by that. You know, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, if it's a little bit of a question, I'm just throwing these ideas so it'll be clearer.
Yes, I totally, totally agree. We have to have all of those.
Yeah, yeah.
But we don't want to create lists because that just turns, turns the council off.
So, so these four items are what we need to be prepared to discuss on the 3rd?
Yeah.
And then you'll bring back to us, what time the committee can decide what time it's going to meet, but all of us on the 4th. Let's get an agreed time right now for...
Committee meeting's on the 3rd, right?
3rd.
What time is the committee meeting?
It's up to you.
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
When are you available?
I have an 11 o'clock. So other than that, you would...
So, after lunch, let's meet at...
That would be...
Let's meet at 1:00.
And we'll meet on the 4th then?
That's that smaller group then, we're meeting in there.
1:00 where, John? Your office or here somewhere?
Let's see if we can reserve room 118.
That's this one?
That's the conference room right up there.
Is it 1:00?
Yes. The conference room on January 3rd for the committee.
And on January 4th, 9:00?
For all of us?
For all of us.
Here?
Yes, here. Would that, everybody's good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
We plan all day, or...
Well, I would, all morning, for sure. But let's do it all morning. So that's January 4th at 9:00.
All right, that's, let me just review.
That's a Friday.
Larry, can I point out something here?
Yes.
The 3rd, we're going to be coming up with all the items that are going to be included in the afternoon. The next morning, we're going to meet and talk about those.
Right.
For full board approval.
Yeah, okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, so that's that, that's great.
Good job, Larry.
Before we adjourn then, there's another time for public comment. Is there any public comment?
Yes, Rick Steinmeier here. Gee whiz, there's a, the most important part of being a city is telling other people what they can do. Every regulation removes somebody's freedom, and so does every new tax, removes somebody's On the other side of the coin, the zoning board has very little information to go on to make a decision. That's a feeling I got from, from the discussions that I've watched. By having a site plan available to the zoning board, that requires the developer to reach in his pocket a little bit and be more serious about what he's going to do, rather than, oh, I got this, I'm going to get this variance. We get so many changes in the law that we have. You know, we write these laws and then somebody, oh, I want, I want something that's not the law. I don't think we need any, need all these variances that the people are getting. I don't think we need all these variances that the people are getting. And by being more serious in making up a site plan and a usage plan, the developer's more likely to develop it, rather than flip it to somebody else and sit on it for four years or five years and then renew it and this and this. We get so many proposals come before the city council and the board that don't get built, and that's not fair to anybody. I don't think that's right, because then they try and flip it. They try and find somebody else that has more money that can develop what they've put this little bit in to get a lot out, and I think this board's going in the right direction. I think a site plan and a usage plan, closer use of the code, the existing code, that's rather than all the variances and changing the setbacks and all this and that, and I really don't like zero setbacks, because who's going to take care of the other side of the fence? Because you put a fence up on zero, on the lot line, you've got trespass to maintain the other side of the fence, or you've got to force the neighbor to take care of the other side of the fence. The fences do waste a lot of property, and you've got to have a setback. This thing with the air conditioners in that area is really bad, because they, it seems like the air conditioning is just an afterthought. They got a nice square building, and then they stick this little pimple out on the side, and then they put a set of steps, and you're right next to the neighbor's bedroom, and that's something that I think has been looked at and we're going to work on. So, thank you very much, you guys are doing a great job. It's the most important thing. The reason Fort Myers Beach became a city is because Lee County went and said, oh, we don't need this public access, we'll give it to this developer, and we'll put this high-rise up, and people say, hey, you know, where are we? Where are the people, you know, so, and where are the people here? They all work for me, on my payroll, except for you folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before the board?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question. You know, we spend an awful lot of time on this Popeyes, all right? Now, the city council had, I guess yesterday, had the meeting, so they, again, they went against what the zoning board recommended. What was the question? Are you allowed to, are you allowed to have a variance and then a, the final thing with the city council? I don't understand that. You know, I need clarification of that, especially-
Without, without, excuse me. Without trying to be judgmental, I was puzzled when we got the case, how you could have a variance to a special exception. You're asking for a variance to the law, and I never heard of such a thing, and second-
You amend the law, you don't vary it.
That's right. You have, their option would have been to amend it.
Right.
And I don't understand how that works, to be honest with you, so, but they felt otherwise, but it was very puzzling, it was very puzzling to me.
It was to me, too.
How you do that, I never heard of that.
It was apparent to me that the city council didn't care about what the law was. Period.
That might be a better question for your attorneys to answer. What was determined was that the request, as conditioned, was something the city council wanted to approve. In terms of how someone worked through the legal gyrations, I might not be qualified to provide that answer.
But, you know, to Mr. Steinmeier's point, you pass a law, and the very first case that comes before you, you deviate from the law you just passed, I mean, and that statute was passed recently.
2015.
2015.
Yes.
So, I mean, why pass a law if you're going to, it's very confusing to me.
You know, public opinion, wanted a Popeyes.
And it didn't matter what the law was.
I'm just saying, out there on the block, right there, they wanted a Popeyes, and that's probably what the city council heard, and now, what you're saying, I mean-
I wanted a Popeyes, too.
We are, we are.
Yeah.
Yeah, but now, you know, this is why you have a zoning board. I come from a zoning board, and zoning board recommends yea or nay, you know, and then I just, I don't understand it.
Well, one of the dangers of going this way, it seems to me, for a board, is if anybody wants to legally challenge this, they have a very big opening, the law doesn't allow it to be done, and so you set up the possibility of a legal challenge that you're going to be, you, the public person, is going to be wrong on, and I just think that's very counterproductive. If the council wanted to change that, it had total power to do so, but it just had to follow the process. It had to notify the public that it was going to make an amendment to the existing law. There had to be a hearing, I mean, a reading, and then a vote, and then you do it. But to rule by exception and ignore the law, it strikes me as, and this is a big thing I have, it's a very unwise thing to do. It really sets you up.
Michael?
Same answer as John. I wasn't going to speak to the legal gyrations, I just came up here in case you had additional questions about what happened yesterday since I was presenting it.
Is there anything further? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Roll call? Do we need a roll call for a motion to adjourn?
No.
No. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.